Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of today's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve today's agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All same sign. Citizens have been our day citizens that do would like to address an issue that is not on today's agenda. Seeing then we'll move on, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve payment of bills and vouchers, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Approval of the minutes from the February 5th meeting.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February 5th meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Annual update, technology services, Tim. And Mark is coming too, he's next, so come on up. Good morning gentlemen.
Good morning. We typically do our updates together since two of us we make up the IT department, so I'm gonna start first, the technology services part. I guess our goal hasn't changed, our technology services basically there to provide customer service to the county employees. We're one of those, I guess, rare county departments that don't have any interaction with the public. The information services side does, but so the county employees are our customers, so it's our job to make sure that they have all the tools that they need to provide quality customer service to the taxpayers. So, first we'll start with the staffing. Been a lot of changes in this past year in the staffing of our department. Currently right now, we have myself, the director, three system administrators, four computer support specialists. At some point last year, there was a database administrator position on the information services side. When that position was vacated, we moved that department or that person or position over to the technology services side. And at that point, we had two of our computer support specialists that had applied for it, one of them got the position and the other one eventually left employment, which left us two people short on our computer support desk, which made for some pretty good challenges last year. You know, it kinda left Pam by herself. Everybody in the department stepped up during that time. I mean, and I'm not saying just on technology services side, even on Mark's side, everybody really pitched in and helped out, even Tracy at her new position was able to help with those until we got new staff hired. So our system administrators Rory, Jocelyn, Tracy, just amazing work, everything they do. Our IT specialist Pam has been with us for 26 years. Sarah and Dan are new people. Pam has done an amazing job at training these folks and getting them up to speed. We've since hired an additional support person who starts hopefully on Monday. So we're sitting really good for 2019. So our system administrators, their duty is networked infrastructure, system security, backup, restore disaster recovery, managing the caseworks environment, and tier two support. Our computer support specialist, tier one phone support, help desk, ticket support, inventory management, scheduling ITV sites, all the desktop hardware, peripheral devices, mobile devices, and slide sheet maintenance, and much, 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 much more than that So some of the highlights, over 3,000 help desk tickets last year. That number grows every year, of course, we're hiring more people, things are getting more complex, we're getting more cell phones, we're getting more laptops, desktop phones. As we hire more people, the infrastructure grows and demand grows. We've added more data closets in the past year, and we have very large virtual environment running, many servers need to be managed. So, you know, one thing, before we get into the future, 2019, excuse me, 2018 was just an amazingly busy year. I think I say this every year, but last year was our busiest and that always is true. It seems that it never slows down, it just gets busier and more complex. But the staff just did a great job at all their jobs. Everybody pitches in where they're needed and it just makes my job just incredibly easy by having great staff that I work with. Of course, the biggest challenge last year was the new buildings, and everybody pitched in there. I mean, we're hanging TVs, installing more networking infrastructure, working with tech vendors. Actually ended up being, we expected it to be a lot of work and it was probably way more work than we expected, but it was, but everything went really well. We couldn't have done it without a team effort on everybody on the staff, because they still have to do their everyday jobs at the same time. So our goals, future, which are current goals too, is to continue to provide quality customer service to all of our users, maintain high levels of security, protect county access to data, maintain quality and current technology inventory, and to leverage cloud resources to increase efficiencies and disaster preparedness.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions for Tim? Mark?
Okay, so as Tim mentioned, our departments work together. We actually have a dashy line between Tim and myself so that if either one of us is gone, we can help our staff from either side, and that works pretty well. I'll start off just by saying 2018 was an extraordinary year I've never experienced. First of all, I replaced my entire staff during the year, and we had these new buildings coming online, and we knew those were going to be a lot of work, but I think the impact to us was something we had not calculated correctly. It was undertaking like we'd never come across before, but it, yeah, we worked hard and got a lot of stuff done. The biggest thing I've learned over the years now that especially like last year, you know, we got some staff changes and we bring these new staff on board, you know, there's some super talented folks, but it takes time to bring them up to speed, and that's just challenging to keep providing the services we're trying to provide and have staff turnover, so I'm gonna try to do the best we can to keep them. Anyway, so the information services side, our department is primarily responsible for two major functions. The biggest ones are our geographic information system and our websites, and basically data delivery is what we're in the business of. We have customers that are inside the county as well as outside, we provide support to several agencies as well as the citizens themselves, so we have, we actually have a broader scope of who we work with than what technology services does. We have, there's five staff positions, the, myself, I'm the director, we have a GIS specialist and a GIS technician. The GIS technician is a variable hour position that we normally fill in the summertime to help us with some projects. We have a web specialist which does all of our website stuff, and then we also have a multimedia specialist which is a person that records these meetings. Right now, those positions are filled with myself, Tim DeForge, he was the multimedia specialist, has been now moved to the web specialist position, he's been at that two weeks. We have Mandy Olson as our GIS specialist, and then we've got other two slots are vacant at the moment. Tim mentioned that he's had quite a bit of staffing change over the year, and the impact of that is we have a space issue, like many departments, where there's just not enough room for us. So what we've done in the last couple, few weeks is we've moved out, part of our, well most of us, everybody but me. Our web specialist is now located in Medium C, which used to be right over here, now we're gonna turn that into an office, so he'll be housed in that area there. And we moved our primary GIS operations into the recorder's office downstairs, that's where Mandy is located, and that's where our GIS technician will also be located, is down there, so they have a little corner that they were kind enough to share with us, and so we're down there. One of the reasons we're trying to do some of that, besides freeing up some space for Tim and his folks, is we're trying to keep the general public out of that IT space. So we're trying to figure out how to deal, provide the support they need, but not have them into that secure space. So that's one of the things we're trying to get at with those changes. All right, so on the GIS side, you know, we do our map production, parcel maintenance is a big one. Addressing is, I'm the E91 addressing authority in Clay County, so all the addressing comes through us, and we've been really involved with a couple pieces to that. One of the ones which we did last year was a massive project, was, I think I came and talked to you folks about the census luka, it was called, a local update of census addresses. That took three full months of our work to get completed, but we finished that and got that information returned back to them. Now we're working on next generation 911 data and trying to get that ready for that project when it comes through from the state. I wanted to talk a little bit about surveyor services. A few years back, we contracted for county surveyor services and we managed that, specifically the section corner remonumentation project. That's been working really well, it's a really good program that we're doing, I'm really grateful for it. Right, we met with him just last week, AE 2S is under contract with us right now to do that work, and what we do is we look at what they've done, what we've got, and where we're missing data, and where we need them to look the next year. Right now, we've got them this year scheduled to work in Tansom Township, specifically because we have some issues with how things fit with our neighbor counties down there, so we're trying to straighten out some of that section down there. The problem with working in that part of the county is it is relatively slow. We did, last year we did 48 corners as all, because of the ruggedness of the terrain and the, it's just not, it's not the, like the most, most of our counties are the nice big grid, but you get into that part, we get the hills and the lakes and the trees, and it's a little more expensive, a little slower going, but it's, I think, really worthwhile work. We maintain all of the GIS, all who works on, you know, how do we deliver the data to people that need it, and we're constantly trying to make that better with our online mapping systems. All right, the website, our website presence is a big piece of what we do. We just redid our website, just came out in December, we were here and showed it off. I think it's a much better product now, and we'll continue to try to keep it as best we can to deliver the information we need to our, all of our folks that need it. What do we got? Oh yeah, then we record the meetings and do all those parts here. All right, right now, we're maintaining 29,351 parcels, that's as of this morning, and that changes how many they make, but that's how we're doing that. We've got 280 layers in the GIS that we've maintained. We actually started discussions yesterday, normally about March 1st, which is coming up this week, we started gearing up to update several of our data sets, getting ready for flooding and emergency operations that may be needed, so we'll start that work soon so that we're ready, just in case it might come up. We've got 4,000 pages on our website, we have about half a million visits or hits per month on our website, so they're really, it's a really popular thing.
Mark, what, how does that number change over time? Has it increased?
The website traffic? Yeah, it's continually been going up. As we look at it over years, it's slowly climbing. We also get reports every month we look at to tell us what things they're looking at, you know, what pages are the most popular, so we try to make sure that we're delivering the information they're looking for. Just as, you know, the number one thing on our website that we want to see is the inmate roster, and that's what they're here for. But yeah, we try, we're seeing growth continuously on what they're looking for.
Thank you.
We're, with our new website that we just rolled out, one of the big purposes behind that is we're trying to enhance our, the mobility of our websites and all of our data so that it's more friendly to phones and some of those applications, we're seeing people wanna use it for more and more. We're constantly looking at our online presence, how do we deliver data electronically and whatever else they might need, because if we can do that, we can prevent people from having to come here and visit us, so they can do, work with us 24 hours a day if they need to, if we can deliver it electronically. We're always looking at how we can do that better, that's one of the things we're constantly working with our departments on and trying to figure out how we wanna do that. We're striving toward more cloud-based operations, based solutions because of the resiliency that they have for us, and training is a big thing. We provide the training, so we'll constantly work on that. And that's the end, does he have any other questions about what we do?
Questions for Mark?
I got one question. When you were talking about surveying, involved in some discussions, like if you have a dispute with your neighbor or something with that, as far as where the property lines end, I mean, you said you do survey and stuff, or we do survey or whatever, who has that record? I mean, you go to the city, they say they don't have the record. Does the county have that record where the property lines all run?
The county will have the legal description information that talks about what the property is described as, but the only person that can actually indicate on the earth where those lines are is a registered land surveyor. So we get questions all the time, and we say you've gotta hire a surveyor to come out there and mark where those corners are. One of the things we're doing though, I was just talking about the section corner remonumentation, is that all the surveys tie back to section corners. So if we have good section corners, that means if you needed to have a survey done, it's at least, your cost will be lower if there's a good section corner to use already than if there isn't. But yeah, we get that question quite often, and we tell them they have to talk to a registered land surveyor. We don't recommend any, but we tell them that's the only solution for land dispute.
And they keep on hearing there's supposed to be some pins in the property lines.
Yep, yeah, there should be.
In order to find them, you need a surveyor.
That's the answer, that's the only legal way to do it.
Okay. Any other questions? Great work guys, you and your staffs, and we do appreciate what you did, we understood what a big challenge it was with these new buildings, and it did not go unnoticed all the work that you did sometimes, you guys are the heroes, but county wouldn't work without you and your staff, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, annual department update, recorder's office. Tim Savage. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. Good morning, Kishnas, thank you for having me this morning. First, I'd like to give a brief overview of the services that are provided by the recorder's office. The vitals area of our office is where we provide the most customer service to the public. We serve as a local issuance office for the Minnesota Department of Health. This allows individuals obtain a birth certificate from our office no matter where they were born in the state. The same is true for death certificates, for deaths that have occurred since 1997. Recorder's office also issues marriage licenses and certificates of the marriage certificates that we file here, and then we also file notary filings and marriage ordinations in our office. Recording of real estate documents is the other large area of customer service. We record over 300 document types. Every document is data entered, scanned, and then verified that all that information is correct. We sell Clay County plot books at our office and assist the public when they come in to search records. Kind of a little overview of what we provide. So going into my department update, looking back, we've felt a small increase in our customer service requests for various vital statistics certificates. This seems to be due to the requirements set forth by the local DMV offices. We have many individuals needing their birth certificates and our marriage certificates to obtain a state ID or a driver's license. In January, we welcome the GIS technician into our office space, and this will help improve the customer service for our real estate customers. Often, they would, you know, want a copy of the map that they were looking at in our office, and we would send them up to third floor, now I can just have them right there get their map. So we continue to scan documents and historical items in our office and make available to the public what we can through our online paid subscription service. We continue to issue a large number of marriage licenses, and we'll be gearing up to start our busy season with those this spring. Due to the growth in Clay County, we have reviewed and recorded many new platted subdivisions within Clay County. And going forward, next year, we are planning a major upgrade of our recording software. Our last upgrade was done in 2003. All of my staff will attend legal description training that we're putting on here at the county with the other land record departments. Now that I have been in this position for a little while, I have been reviewing our fee schedules, and I plan to report recommendations back to you at a later date for some adjustments there. I plan to work with the GIS department to integrate our online real estate records with the online property maps, and this will make the process of searching recorded documents easier for the public. The recorder's office compliance fund committee will meet in April to determine future uses of the compliance fund revenue for the upcoming budget year, and I'm happy to report that with lots of hard work, we've been able to stay 100% compliant with the state. Before the next budget cycle as well, I'd like the PIC committee to look at returning to our prior organizational structure to include a chief deputy position in our office. We'll have a new employee starting next week, and the Minnesota Department of Health will be implementing new online trading modules for the staff that issue birth and death certificates. So everybody in our office will have to take those modules and pass the test in order to keep issuing those certificates. So that's what I have for department update, do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tim? Okay, good job, Tim. Thank you for you and your staff for everything you do, it's a lot of information, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have another item on the agenda also?
Yes, I have a software upgrade request that I will need board action on today. Like I said in my update, we're planning a major upgrade of our software in February of 2020. We're currently running a program that was installed in 2003, so as technology changes, our software vendor has upgraded their program, and no more changes or enhancements will be available for our current software in the future. So we will work with our vendor, Fiddler Technologies, to assess our current processes and workflows. They'll send a project manager out here to look at everything that we need to do to do to our new software. So with that comes the need for additional and upgraded hardware. We have four employees in our office, so the estimate that attached to the memo here is for four workstations. Each station will need a document scanner and a barcode scanner, and my station and my lead deputy recorder will require a fingerprint scanner to override for any supervisor needs. We do have funds available in our technology fund to cover the cost. You guys have any questions regarding the hardware?
Any questions? Anything else?
No. Do you want me to move on to the next one, or do you want to?
Why don't we?
We need to roll on this one. I'll make a motion to approve the upgrade.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the upgrade, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The second part that I have as part of our software upgrade request is to include BASHian hosting services. This program replaces the need for an onsite server here at the county. It provides a secure platform without the maintenance and management of a server here onsite. It would reduce the traffic on our county network from our remote searchers, and it will alleviate the cost of server hardware in the future. I have talked with technology services, and this is the direction that they are going with other departments, and so this would not be duplicating any efforts, in fact, it would be kind of eliminating the need for them with our office in regards to our real estate recordings. There is a fee for this, an annual fee. Currently, I'm paying about $5,000 a year for replication, and this would be $10,400 a year, so I would not be paying for replication, so the difference in the increase would be the $5,400 a year, and this would be part of my disaster recovery plan, because everything will be offsite if something were to happen here and it's backed up from two locations. So that's what I'm asking for, and we do have funds in our technology fund to cover that, and we'll talk to that committee about including that in there if it's approved.
I'll make a motion to approve item B.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The third item that I'm looking for board approval on is to utilize a program that they offer called Pin integrity. This is a program that links the legal description, the address, and the parcel number together in our recording software. Oftentimes, a public comes in and they have an address to search, and so they can't use our software very easily because it doesn't read address, it just reads legal description or a parcel number. So this program will make it easier for the public to sit down and search our computers without needing as much assistance from our office. It also makes our land records more consistent, because it will, there'll be a database that will be built using all the land records information, and it will help us keep our data entry more consistent for searchers in the future. To build that database, it's a one-time fee of $15,000, and I do have funds available in my technology fund to cover that amount. Is there any questions regarding?
Kevin, you have a question?
Has this, has this software been tested?
Otter Tail has been using it.
So I'm just trying to make sure we avoid like another Minlars thing.
Yeah, yeah, it has been used in other counties. In Minnesota, Otter Tail is the only county currently using it.
And if they have any trouble?
No, no.
There's no ongoing maintenance fees?
No, no ongoing maintenance fees, they actually eliminated all of those last year. So it's just the one-time conversion fee.
I approve, we'll see.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. There you go, Kim.
Okay, I have one fourth and final item, sorry, is to fully implement a program that our technology vendor offers called Property Fraud Alert. We are currently offering it, but we require an application to be completed by the individual and a $10 fee. We've had very few people actually sign up for the service, but with the amount of fraud and the fraudulent calls that we're receiving with people checking on our property, I feel that it would be beneficial to eliminate the application process and remove the fees so that more people can get an alert when something is recorded in their name in our office.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Good work, you and your staff.
Yep, there's a form, and then we need to see ID. Thank you.
Okay, next item, request to fill vacated position for environmental health services manager, Catherine McKay. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Okay. First request for retirement in a position to be filled as environmental health services manager. That person has been here for 37 years, so retiring last day will be in March. I've included in the description some of the responsibilities of this position, including the food pool and lodging inspections, plan reviews, sewer systems, public health nuisances, et cetera, and then requirements. So my request is to fill this position, it's a full-time position. The revenue for this position is generated by the license fees, food pool and lodging license fees. The only one that is, one of the program areas, it's a requirement of the county, is that onsite sewage treatment that both of these, the two sanitarians that are in this program provide. That one, of course, there's county dollars that support that, there's not a lot of revenue, there's a sewer system permit, permits that they receive funding for, there's a state grant, there's site evaluation fees, but it doesn't support the program. It's a county requirement, however, that they provide that service. The rest of the program areas are, there is- that onsite sewage treatment that both of these, the two sanitarians that are in this program provide. That one, of course, there's county dollars that support that. There's not a lot of revenue. There's a sewer system permit, permits that they receive funding for. There's a state grant. There's site evaluation fees, but it doesn't support the program. It's a county requirement, however, that they provide that service. The rest of the program areas are, there is license fees that cover all of the expenses.
So we're looking at the higher back, one person for the, is this?
One person, and then if there's an internal candidate that meets the requirements, then to, I'd like a request to backfill that position.
You approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a second position, and it's under Jamie's. The second position we are requesting to fill is a nurse family partnership position, and that is after about nineteen years. The nurse that's retiring is actually one of the founders of the Nurse Family Partnership Program. We brought you a handout on that program so we can plug it at the same time. But she was one of the first founders, and if you see this little flyer that we included on the Nurse Family Partnership Program, there's a map that says the program started in Minnesota in 2001, which is not correct. It actually started in Clay County in 2000, and Linda was the founders, one of the founders of that program. And then while I'm plugging it, I just wanted to note that during the intergovernmental retreat, when we talked about those early years and how that foundation is what supports later behavior, school, education, health, and that's the core of this program. So it's the well-trained nurse combined with a pregnant woman who's motivated to be a good parent, and then the tools that they can learn from this program to support changing the outcomes of that whole family. So I know that's more than what you wanted to hear, but our request is to fill that position when Linda retires.
Questions for Jamie?
Make a motion to approve the request.
And motion?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion?
Thank you for including us.
Yeah, sure.
Is there, is there some activity on this program going on through the state legislature right now?
You know, family home visiting in general is a focus of the legislature. This is one evidence-based home visiting model supported by the Minnesota Department of Health.
Yeah, okay. I was watching some of the House hearings just recently, and I know this was quite a topic on the home visiting. Curious if you're having indications of, are they concerned with outcomes, or are they satisfied with outcomes? Are they looking at?
They're looking at expanding basically the program. The key is that there is data to back up the support, so.
Yeah, that was the.
There's a lot of research that goes into supporting this, with quarterly reports that go back to the State Health Department and to the federal government through a grant that we have for the federal government, too. So yeah, that helps to have the data to back up.
And that's some of the conversation they're having in the legislature, that it's, there's data and outcomes, and so they're really looking at the evidence-based programs.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave's not here.
She's just walking in the door.
Is he? Maybe we can do some reports. Jenny, you want to give your report?
Thank you. Last week, I attended a special meeting for the Buffalo Red Watershed where they had a Skype meeting with Minnesota DNR. There are a number of issues that the watershed wanted to have clarification on in terms of moving forward, conditions of the permit that the DNR had issued, and so I think it was a very open, free conversation on what those concerns were, and I think helped clarify some of the issues for the watershed as they move forward and what their decision will be. I had some discussion with Lakes and Prairies last week in regards to transportation plan. One of our meetings did get canceled, though, due to the weather. Individuals weren't able to make it from Purgis Falls. I had a MetroCog meeting where we added some issues, not some issues, added in that MetroCog will pay for the professional dues and memberships for their employees. I think I reported about that on the executive committee meeting. Yesterday, I traveled to Purgis Falls to attend the annual meeting for Lakeland Mental Health. That agency continues to be in good standing, and financials look really good. I think it was about a 4.34% net margin, so that looks good. They did thank Clay County for the collaboration with the correctional facility and juvenile facility moving forward, and we did appoint four members for reelection to that board. In the afternoon, I had the regular meeting for Lakeland. We had board elections. I'm now serving as chair in that capacity. We talked that Lakeland had now visited all the different counties with their ruse to talk about the performance incentive and review of the different programs that they're offering. The Minnesota legislation update is really heavy in terms of mental health and supportive housing, so we'll see what any actions in St. Paul will mean for them as well, and we will be having an executive committee meeting to discuss bylaws and new member orientation in March. That concludes my.
Thanks. Kevin, what would be yours, too?
Last Tuesday after our meeting, we did have a diversion executive committee, and it was primarily to discuss some items that were of interest to us regarding what was later that day, and that was the meeting that Commissioner Mollison talked about with the, and I attended as well, the Skype meeting with the DNR in the Buffalo River watershed I do, I do want to say that, you know, there were certainly a lot of questions asked in regards to the conditions that are put forward in the, in the permit issued by the DNR. But I was, and again, I'm going to reiterate something that Deputy Commissioner Nairamore said at the very beginning of that meeting, is that they do believe that they have a good, strong permit, and it's very defensible. And so I'm hoping that these issues, that those who are looking at contested case hearings can look at resolving some of those issues short of litigation. So I think hopefully that meeting was a step in that direction with the watershed board. Then yesterday, we, we had a township meeting, and I couldn't make, due to a dental appointment that I had to be at, but Commissioner Gross will talk about that. And then yesterday, we did have another diversion executive meeting. Again, primary focus was on outreach. Right now, outreach with, you know, continued whatever we can do to assist the Buffalo Red in any questions that they have regarding not only our permit applications, but concerns, or what they may still have concerns with the DNR permit, trying to assure them, we're willing to get them every answer we can for them. In addition, I think we're working on some communication with Comstock and Wolverton. It is our understanding that, that there is, under the new Plan B, there is, there is no impacts to Comstock, and in Wolverton, there is, there's certainly a concern regarding Wolverton Creek, I believe it is, and how that drains. And we have been assured that, that there is the proper engineering, both through the DNR and through our technical people, that that issue can and will be resolved. So hopefully, again, like I said, we can, we can get past litigation and move on to resolution. And that, there was, we did discuss, there are some letters that are going out to all landowners. I think Commissioner Wayland, you're a signer on that letter. And I think those, I think those are being mailed this week, letting all these properties that could be in the impacted area know who to contact for questions regarding their own individual circumstances. And that's, that's the best way to handle that, is to deal with each one of them one-on-one, and we're hopeful that when they receive that, they will get calls. There is, there are going to be some property owners who have been notified that their lands might be, there might need to be access to those properties early to do some necessary soil borings, so we'll see how that all goes. So that concludes my report.
Thanks, Frank.
Yeah, last Tuesday, when you guys, while you were gone, Commissioner Campbell had another meeting, and I had the opportunity to go to the construction engineers. You know, not that I had much to offer, but what I took from that meeting was really great. You know, when I looked at the people sitting there, well, Mark was there, you know, Tim, they were here this morning, and I looked at the people. We hired these people to supervise their little departments, you know, and all of a sudden, hey, we got a $60 million project here, you know, we got the jail, we got the law enforcement center, we got the ju. Now, these people, you know, were put in charge of the $60 million project, and they came through. It was, it was, it was an honor sitting there and showing these people how good of a job they'd done. And Steve, the all your staff, thank you so much for that, you know, and Construction Engineer just gave us an update of what's happening, the juvenile center, and things are moving along good there, I think. Then Thursday, I went to the highway, well, not highway tracking, but there were the township meeting with the highway departments, and there was $11 decrease in the mileage. Townships were all representative and represented there. There really was no, I was, one concern brought up about public cleaning is not done fast enough, whatever, whatever, but it was a good meeting. Everybody seemed to be satisfied with the way the services that we're providing and stuff like that, so it was a very good meeting. I appreciate the township officers coming in and going to the meeting and seeing what's going on. Yesterday, as Jenny reported, the annual report from Lakeland Mental Health, but there again, I was, it's amazing all the works, the work that those people do down there, you know, and it's just, I guess I noted that a lot of what they're doing is treating people after the fact sometimes, you know, and I was, I was sort of looking, can we get to them before, you know, like, what can we do about high school dropouts? And I don't know if that's what their involvement is or not, but I think it is, they are in the schools. So, you know, are we offering the right things in the high school, you know? Are people, you know, we give them math and science and geometry and algebra. Is that what some of our kids are dropping out? They're probably not interested in that anymore. Probably should be offering more vocational, and I know I'm getting a little bit off track there, you know, but, you know, are we offering the right thing to our children, you know, and, you know, why are they dropping out? And I think we got to find that out. Again, a good meeting, Lakeland Health's doing a good job, you know, they're showing them profit and doing a good job there. My report.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. On Friday, I attended the Clay County Early Childhood Initiative monthly meeting, and we had a review of our 2019 work plan and updates from providers, and we established our goals. Number one goal was to increase awareness of the importance of quality early childhood experiences. And then we had agency updates after that by the various providers that were present, and one of them, continuing discussions we've had month after month, is the difficulties that they're encountering in licensing providers and the lifetime that it takes to get them okayed. And they're all short, of course, and it's an ongoing problem. But that's the full extent of my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I had no report. I was on last week, so Dave and Eric, come on up.
Morning. Mutiny. Mutiny.
I've got four items today to bring to you, to you guys. First item is our local road improvement resolutions. So these are resolutions that are not only, there's one county project, and I think there's three city applications, or are there going to be two? Will there be three?
Three separate.
Three separate applications. City Holly has two projects that they've put together. Eric kind of gave you a map there. They've got one on Eighth Street, and they've got one on kind of a little combination of three streets, three streets there in their industrial park by their elevator. The city of Glendon has, I think everyone's maybe a little familiar with the Seventh Street Extension, that would kind of tie into a lot of their school renovations and potential projects that they've got looking out there. They feel it would be a major help to their, how their buses access the school. The new front, the new front will be, actually be in the back of the building. They're trying to change a little bit of how people access their schools, so I think both projects are good projects. We'd like to see the money come into Clay County versus some other portion of the state. The project that we're going to submit again is also on County Route 23. It's a landfill project. I'm not sure if anybody's really heard, but this round of local road improvement is unfunded. I think they're trying to put together candidate lists of projects. There isn't, there's, I don't believe there's funding set aside if funding comes available. They've, the state would have already done this work, so it's a little hopeful, I guess, but I feel we still should put projects in in our county, so.
Is there anything I missed on that, Eric?
No, I guess the only thing I would add is Holly would have two separate resolutions, one for the Eighth Street, and then the elevator loop is a separate, separate application. So. So you're looking for approval of these resolutions, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I'd move 2019-10.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'd move 2019-11. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'd move 2019-12. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion?
Does that have any basis on whether the grant, or the project for the school goes through or not? Is that going to go ahead, whether the school gets approved or not?
I would guess that they're kind of tied in together, but I don't think one's going to stop the other. Like if this, if, I think if they don't get local road improvement grants for the roadway, I think they would maybe try to incorporate it with their building project in general, I believe.
That's kind of my understanding of the discussion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, I'd move 2019-13.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
All right. Item number two is approval of the annual township maintenance contract numbers, contract period running July 1st, 2019 through June 30th of 2020. Like Frank mentioned, we did hold our, well, first we viewed this and went over the numbers at Highway Tracking Committee on February 12th, and then a week later on the 21st, or a couple.
a couple weeks later, which was last Thursday, brought in all the township officials that are willing to come in. Very well attended, again. I thought it was, reiterate exactly what Frank said, it was a very good meeting. They asked a few questions here and there, shared a little bit about how things are going. One resident was probably hoping we could get the roads cleared a little sooner in the morning, but it's really hard when you've got 1,600 miles. I think everyone gets it, you know? Plus, it's been a tough winter. I think a lot of people yesterday expressed that. We got a lot of phone calls, and we still are getting good calls, too, though, which is kind of nice. We get plenty of good calls. And I was out yesterday pretty much all day, and I got a call from one resident kind of down in Commissioner Mojo's area. We went down and we actually plowed right to their house and got the wife and daughter able to get out of their place. There was another gentleman that was stranded in his place for two days north of County Route 26, by the Buffalo River. Kim was working with our motor grader operator, and we plowed in and got him out, and so it was kind of nice, you know, we're trying to kind of do what we can. We don't want to bounce around all over the county doing a little here and a little there, but for the most part, I think our guys were pretty flexible, and we did have some breakdowns yesterday. We had several trucks really running into a lot of problems this year as our other counties, but when the underbody scraper is scraping, all the snow and slush flies forward and gets on the transmission, and then it starts freezing under there and pulling wires out of the transmission. So Clayton stayed late last night trying to kind of fabricate some sort of a shield that would protect that from getting, you know, once ice starts building on that little wire and it gets heavier and heavier, it starts pulling it out. For the most part, everyone's kind of doing what they can. I think our meeting went really good. Like Frank said, the numbers, and Ann does a nice job. She pulls all this together, the contracts is, you know, we bill it out in two different years, so essentially, it's a first half, second half, it's a lot of work. The actual dollars spent in 2018 did go up, but with that rolling five-year average, it kept the numbers more consistent, and they actually went down $11 per mile. So there was a few years that we probably, well, we did, we charged more than our numbers, more than the actual costs were, but like this past year in 18, we're going to collect less than the costs are. So it kind of goes up and down, and I think that is a good way of balancing out.
I have one question. Some of the townships that not are on, that are not on the program, if they ever come back in again, would that lower the cost of the mileage?
Eric and I were just talking about that this morning. We'd have to take a look at it, because, you know, there's two that we'll probably talk about at Highway Tracking Committee on the 12th, and, you know, if they have 30 or 35 miles apiece, yeah, you'd add 60 to 70 miles into the mixture, but then your costs may go up as well. So I'd have to take a look and see. I would hope it would kind of balance out a little bit for the, the extra increased costs would get spread out over another 60 or 70 miles. So I guess that's going to be the, what we're going to try to bring forward to Highway Tracking Committee is if we did allow them two townships, and I haven't heard for sure, but even if they do come back, but could we, do we have enough manpower? Do we have enough equipment that we can do an adequate job? You know, we don't want to, you know, we did used to do this for those townships, and then we did add a 12th district for a couple of years, and then once they left, I think the 12th district went away. So we should probably revisit some of those things again. So I guess I would, I would recommend approval, the new rate, 2019-20 being 756 per mile.
Make a motion, too, for the township contract.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All say aye, motion carries.
I just want to comment, thanks for your dialogue that you're having with the schools. As you and I talked Friday, we've had a lot of buses going in the ditches on those gravel roads, and it's, I think, because there's no way where for that snow to go, everything's pretty chock full, I think it'll continue to be an issue. So I think with these two-hour days, it'll allow us enough time to pop in there and at least get some of the road open so that kids can at least get on a bus.
We're exploring, looking at renting dozers as well. I know the state had one yesterday out on the Highway 336 ramp, and we got a call today from a contractor, and pretty sure we're going to have to start spending some money. We've been kind of dragging our feet for the last couple of weeks, but, yeah, the drifts are just too high at some intersections, and they got to get pushed back.
Okay. Next item, I think we'll skip that one.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
When do you start your new job, Eric?
March 20, or April 8th at Red Lake.
We hate to lose you, so good luck finding a new job, so.
Yeah, I was, you know, I'm very excited on one side and also disappointed because of the things that I, I think Eric's been a fabulous asset, and I love, like working with him, and I think, you know, we complement each other very well, and his technical expertise in working with the guys has been very, very good. And sad to see him go, but yet I'm glad he got, you know, the county ranks, and they definitely got a good guy. They're fortunate for Red Lake County, for sure.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I've really enjoyed my time with Clay County. I'm going to miss it, and can't believe it's already been three years. Yeah, it's been great.
I remember going through the interview process with you, and you were, this was kind of new to you.
Yeah.
And you've done, you've done remarkably well.
I learned a lot, too.
Yeah.
So the request is to fill vacancy for assistant county engineer position, according to board's wishes.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All say aye, motion carries.
Yeah. And then I did get, you know, I know it's a little early, but I got a request from one of my motor grader operators, going to retire towards the end of May. It's the operator works out of Glendon, and going to have a hard time filling his shoes, but there'd be a way I could get started on that, too. There's an internal process being in this union position, so we have to post for five days. And I really, I really, on this one, I don't know if there's going to be internal candidates. We've done quite a bit of that in the last six months or so. It seems like we've been here quite a bit, getting your approval to replace and do backfill on things. So we'll have to see if anyone's interested for this position and if they've got enough qualifications or not. It might be one that we go internal and external, but nonetheless, we got to do the union process first. So I'd like to get permission to get moving on it, and we wouldn't actually hire anyone until, you know, towards the middle, very end of May. You know, I don't need extra people on staff or anything, but I don't want to end up being in the middle of June and still not have it in place either.
Move approval.
We have motion and a second to approve the request for the motor grader operator. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All say aye, motion carries. There you go, gentlemen. Thanks, good luck, Eric.
I should just give one little update, too. I've been kind of working with Administrator Larson and as well as Commissioner Mojo on Crestwood addition. There's some trees out there, and a, for one reason or another, it didn't get done back in November, December, when it probably could have got done. I've been working with our guys a little bit, trying to figure out, there's a bunch of tree piles out there, and it's part of the pollinator project work that the county's working with, soil and water and pheasants forever. I went out there yesterday and took a look, and those piles are completely buried in snow. So it's not looking good, but I have since reached out to the Staben Fire Department, and they've agreed to burn them for us, so our guys don't have to go out and do it. And like I said, I don't, my guys aren't, you know, I think anyone can start a fire, but we're not completely versed in that, but they will take care of this work for us. It's just weather permitting is what they told me, so. Anyway, just give you a little update on that. I've been trying to get it done, it's just we've been getting kicked in the butt with these storms, probably since about the 20th of December, it's just been nonstop.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Eric. Okay, I think we had a closed session. Let's just take about a five-minute break. All say aye, all say aye, motion carries. We are closed, yeah. Okay, we're back in session, and we still have some committee report, or Steve, the county administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. This past week, I participated in a number of diversion committee meetings. Also, last Tuesday, I participated in the juvenile center's owner meeting. We did discuss some different contingency challenges that they're having, and we'll probably be back at a later date to have some further discussion. I also talked, participated in the jail ownership. They've been working on the Phase Two foundations, they're trying to. It's been a little bit challenging with the weather, but they're moving along. We met with Jennifer and Darren last week and Steve Smith in discussion some of the benefit planning for 2020, and so we'll be looking to bring our committee back here in the coming month or so to address some of that. I met with Sheriff Emptying earlier this week, last week, in regards to the valley water rescue. They have not had a contract over the years in all their relationships, and so they're looking to put something on paper that will be bringing before the board here in the next month or so. I had a central administration meeting that afternoon. Mark and Tim kind of discussed some of the space issues that they're having. One of the things that Mark didn't touch on today was the board did, or the county had an updated new emergency notification system that was tested and implemented now that will give us a better idea of kind of what the challenge, any challenges that we're having at campus. We talked about the family service center, West Elevator, that the board's approved to have replaced, is now back in service. And Georgia's continuing to have some issues with maintaining custodial staff that's providing some challenges. I also, Joe is going to be bringing, updating the capital improvement to this board here in a future board meeting. I participated on the 21st at a meeting with Kerry Puser in regards to some of the issues at the juvenile center. I also participated in the township meeting that's been previously discussed by the commissioners. On the 23rd, had a meeting with Pam Foss in regards to legal service contracts. We dealt with the citizens' concern on the 25th, and also a number of personnel matters with Darren. And so I do just kind of touch base. I know there's been some concerns that have been brought forward, but I've also had a number of citizens that have come forward and pleased with the work that the highway department has done clearing snow specifically. It looks like it's snowing again, so.
Looks like it's going to do it again, then.
And so, so I just, I did want to bring that up, and I think some of the people that have brought it up were people that didn't even live in the townships that were taken care of, they were making positive comments about the other areas. I've been working with the board chair in setting up our county-city meeting, where we are scheduled to meet in April, I believe, June, if volunteered.
Hitterdaw.
Hitterdaw, okay. Was it? I'll check. With, Hitterdaw, okay. And to get that date with the chair. And we did, this week, we did receive official notification that the DHS grant that we reapplied for for a detox facility was denied. And so we'll have to go back to the drawing board on that. Just briefly, quick, I just want to mention, I had talked with the chair, the previous chair, I'm going to be on vacation March 11th through the 18th, but Darren is going to be sitting in covering for him. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Tony, anything for us?
Nothing, McGowan, no.
Colleen, anything else?
No.
Anything else? We are here.